Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call us to order on this Monday, October 2nd, 2023 for a workshop of the Lake County School Board. As we stand this morning for the moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance, I just encourage you to perhaps say a special prayer in your mind for the, all the families of Lake Maniola who are hurting this morning and mourning one of the loss of their own. With that, please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice thereof.
All right. Thank you all for coming together this morning. As we begin this morning, I don't have any public input cards, so we'll dive right into the meat of our agenda, all themed around the audit universe. And with that, 3.01, we have Chairman of the Audit Committee, Mr. Kurt Binney here this morning. I see that you're standing versus taking a seat. Does this mean that you don't want to, you want to be brief or?
I'm only getting paid for five minutes.
All right. Very good. All right.
So, good morning, everyone. Good morning. The pleasure to be here, and on behalf of the Audit Committee, we issue our condolences to the family of a Lake Maniola student. So as you all know, June 30th, 2024, Mr. Mock believes he's leaving here, but we'll see about that. Anyway, so the Audit Committee has taken, over the last few months, have reviewed the future of the audit in the district. As you know, Florida Statute 1001.42 states that because of the threshold of revenue that this district takes in, you have to have an internal auditor. So when Mr. Mock leaves, we looked at what do we do? Do we replace him one for one? Do we look at an expansion of the audit department? Do we look at outsourcing? Do we look at shackling him to his desk for another few years? Number four was ruled out for death threats. But over the last six months, we discussed this. We initially ruled out a recommendation for an external auditor, an audit firm that would come into that. We've done that in the past. We don't believe that's the best fit for this district. So that left us with a continuation of the existing audit structure, which is a single auditor, Mr. Mock in this case, or an expansion of the audit department. And what we concluded through some various discussions was that we feel like we should recruit a replacement for Mr. Mock and then advertise for that position, someone that has the skills. Should this board decide to expand audit department, they can take that expansion. But in the short term, we recommend to you just a one-for-one replacement of Mr. Mock. We spoke into HR. We believe that that position, should you choose to do it, should be advertised shortly after Christmas, early January, February, gives us time for the recruiting process. Too early, and we risk losing people because they don't want to wait until May, or we have to have duplication of effort and have two auditors in place, which is not cost-effective. But we don't want to wait too long because we'd like to have some overlap time so the new person can learn the district, because this is a very complex district with all of its moving parts. It's not the largest, but it does have a lot, it's one of the biggest by landmass and by complexity. It has a lot of things you have to learn, especially if you're not in the governmental audit school, school side to start with, as Mr. Mock had a big learning curve when he came here. So our recommendation to you for consideration is just to replace Mr. Mock's position as it is, we have reviewed and submitted, I believe you're going to go over them, a revised job description and a posting, which will go through HR. So pending that, is my five minutes up?
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that recommendation. Mr. Mock, did you have any discussion you wanted to add to that, or Board, do you want to have discussion, ask some questions or?
I just want to be certain.
Chad, does the job description and the job posting recommendations for, come through the HR department to the school board on the board docs?
Yes, well, we'll need the board approve the, the job description and, and the posting will just be posted.
Okay. So I think you guys have those, so my understanding is then you'll bring them forward when you're ready to, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's, you didn't want me to, to put, put them forth?
No.
Okay.
I only have one comment then.
I was, yeah, I was going to ask, is there any comments on either of those documents?
Yeah, on the classification title, I'm not sure which document, is this the one that goes, is posted, the one that's?
The first one, yeah.
The first one was?
It's actually the second one, that was in my pile.
The second one was the job posting?
With the changes, yeah, it's still the?
Well, they both had changes.
Yeah, that one, this one's got the restrictions and the additions, it says the additions.
The only, the only thing I would ask is, so you go through and in blue is added supervised subordinate auditors, blah, 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 blah. Then you go to supervisor responsibility, and it says this job has no supervisory responsibility. So I would just take that out. They're in conflict.
Well, they asked, because I want to keep, I think, maybe you can, but you want to keep all the formats the same, correct?
Well, we added, on this one, it's in blue, added.
Yeah, well, there was a full, yeah, under the old one, there was a full description of what the supervisory responsibilities were, and for the last 10 years, that hasn't applied to this position.
Yep. But in blue, we added that it could, it potentially could have it.
That's right, that it could, but it may not. So I, I wonder if we need a line here that?
Just take it out, because if he has it, we've already covered it over here.
Or do you want verbiage back in there that it has, if someone is hired?
It's already on there in the first page.
Yeah, I know.
Why wouldn't that be under the supervisory responsibilities if it's on the first page?
Or just move it over to the?
Well, I think that, that's one of the standard headings that they want, just for consistency of formatting.
Right.
Chad, do you think that there's some language you could put in there that could account for, or there's the potential for supervision?
What Ms. Luke said, just move that whole paragraph over to?
On the first page, the, the, what is it?
Supervise as subordinate auditors and staff when applicable in their conduct of audit work in accordance with school board-approved risk-based audit plans.
I mean, I think that just having, to maintain consistency, because our job descriptions were a little bit all over the place, so now we've got them in consistent headings. I think what we do is take some of that verbiage, it might be repetitive, but then it's under that heading of supervisory responsibility, so.
Right.
That's all. My problem.
I'd agree that you'd put it there just in case the audit department weren't ever expand. I mean, we've talked about that in the past and maybe more so moving forward if there'd be, bring on a part-time position or not in the future. So no, I would move that paragraph and leave that in there.
Well, wouldn't you be also responsible, I mean, we're looking at 3.05 about an intern, so I think that there might be?
That's what's for trigger.
Right. That's why I was like, why does it say there's not any? Okay. Yeah. Agree.
All right. I had a question about the information technology audit experience requirement there.
Yeah, I thought that was something we should add because of, you know, the changing environments, as you know, most organizations are becoming heavily and more heavily involved in IT. So that experience from an internal audit perspective is very important. So it's something that the, the hiring committee should keep in mind when they're looking at the candidates, to see if they have some background and experience in IT auditing. I think it's going to be very beneficial as, as time goes by.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't disagree that in the ideal world, you want somebody with all sorts of these experiences, certainly in the complex of the IT world. That also being said, I know the IT world is very complex, right? And so I don't know how much or how little experience this person would need to have to be qualified to do the job or not qualified to do the job, that certainly there are many other areas that we audit, and a lot of the IT stuff is, is already outsourced or looked at by the state, right? So, I mean, I, I don't know how much we rely on this particular person to do all those audits, but?
No, 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 no. It was more the complexity of how everything's interrelated. So when you're, no matter what you're looking at within the school district, how that interrelates with IT and the, you know, that complexity of making improvements, so obviously it makes improvements across the school district. It's not, it's not necessarily auditing IT, because you're right, we have a lot of state auditing done on that almost, what, every two to three years, so.
But I agree, I understand what. Yes, no, please go ahead.
So on some of these job descriptions, it's a perfect world thing, you know, we'd like A, B, C, D, E. Now, we know we're not going to get them all, but we want to know what that person has, so if we don't ask for it, a lot of times they won't give it to us. So that's really what it is. You're right, we do get, you know, Purvis Gray, Auditor General, they do look at IT. But also, from our perspective as an audit committee, because of the sensitivity of IT, we're out of the picture. So we would like to have the audit director have some knowledge of it so that they can be involved, so that they can advise you on these types of issues. And I know IT department's good, but, you know, an outside set of eyes just to come in and say, this is important.
So it might not be an area of deep expertise, but some sort of familiar area, so that way they can?
Oh, right. Now, if we have an area that needs to be delved into, we hire professionals like over here.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Binney, I've got one more that's probably more appropriate for you, just for conversation's sake. What's the Audit Committee's thoughts on internal versus external as far as the auditor goes? I mean, I would probably agree that an internal is more beneficial, makes more sense here, but can you expand on that a little bit as to why?
You need to fire him and hire him?
No, I'm saying after he's gone, whoever replaces him, whether they're, whether it's him or not, internal versus external.
Clearly, if you hire a firm, Carrigs, I'll use them as an example, they're going to have a plethora of experience, okay? They're not going to be as responsive, you know, and they're not going to be able to delve into the things you need them to delve on a daily basis in a cost-effective manner. And there's also some legality we would have to go through, Mr. Myers, as far as the statute says have an internal auditor, we would need some clarification as to outsourcing qualifies under statute. But I've been here way too long, and I've been under both, and I believe that the school boards that I've dealt with here and in the past dealt better with an internal person, given, you know, all the issues sometimes with employee, employer relationship, than having to go outsource everything and get that spun up and things like that. Does that answer your question?
It does. I was just curious, kind of the reasoning behind, if that makes sense.
Chad had a little note there, is infinite, skills of HR, job posting, draftings there, that we could always throw the preferred word there on the, on the IT component, to still advertise that skill, but.
Sure.
Acknowledge that we'd, we'd like to get somebody with those skills.
Yeah, the, the fear is, if you emphasize that, the technology part, you may well get an outstanding auditor, that we're going to outsource the, the technology audit anyway.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
So if I were applying and had no background, but I'm amazing over here, then I think, well, I don't qualify.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's too much emphasis on it personally. I agree with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to limit our pool.
Right.
And we could always just chain him to the desk, right? Just not let him leave?
He's already said that.
Yeah, but it's still on the table, right? Yeah.
Okey-dokey.
All right. Any other questions on that one, 3.01?
I just have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I've had the pleasure these past few months of serving as the board liaison, oh, I do, hold that thought. On the job description, there's a typo.
Okay.
Under general description of duties, there needs to be a space between of and duties. It's in all caps. On the classification title, it's headed classification title of internal audit.
What page are you on, on page?
Page one on the one that looks red, blue.
That's the posting.
Yes, there's right at that, like the fourth, the fifth line, that heading has a typo. Duty is underlined at the very top.
So the one that says draft, this is our own job description that we put on our website, but the southern one that you, you gave us, this is the, this would be the posting that gets advertised.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so with that said, I've been in the room with the Audit Committee for the past few months when they've met, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to say something about Mr. Binney since he's here. He has served as chairman this past few months, and I'd just like the board to know that, in my opinion, he's done an excellent job. He leads us with expertise and yet he's quite the moderator. He oftentimes has to take on the head of a mediator, and his skills are not lost on me because I see him and sometimes I feel his frustration, so I would just like to publicly thank you. And I heard your comment about having been here way too long. I certainly hope that was unjust and not a positive, serious comment, but on behalf of the board, thank you.
Indeed.
He typically calls and begs me every year to be reappointed.
Does he?
That he does. That he does. All right. All right. Very good. Okay, I guess we can put 301 in the, in the books for now. The timeline sounded fine to me, y'all. All right. Okay. Good. 3.02 involves the construction closeout audit report, and I think that's probably why we have some special guests, is that right?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Do you want me to jump into it? Or you want to say? Okay. So I trust you guys, obviously y'all have read through the report just at a very high level, and I'm just on, I'm going right to the executive summary, which I guess is page two. Just note three, I think. Is it page three up there? Well, let's go ahead, let's just go to what it actually?
You want that right there or next page?
No, next page. That just tells you what we, that tells you what we didn't do. Basically. Okay. So this is, this is a summary then of the results, and just as a reminder, so this was a, what we call a cost plus with a guaranteed maximum price. What that simply means is that it's essentially auditable, which is a good thing. We could go in then and go through and essentially audit, or better word really, to kind of distinguish it from financial audit, is verify. We go through and verify about 90% of the cost. We really look at about 90% of the cost of the project, because most of the costs of a project like this, about 90%, roughly, relates to costs that are passed through, essentially. What, you know, you're paying the general contractor or the construction manager in this case is Wharton Smith, and they're turning around and cutting those checks to those 30 or 40 subcontracts, right? And so that's what I mean by pass-through cost. And of course, you're paying essentially two broad things, two, really three buckets to Wharton Smith. One is essentially their compensation to manage the project, that's what they're doing for you, they're managing all those subs. So they call that, typically call that the general conditions, that's their compensation, essentially, for their team to manage all those subs and to work with David's team here at the, at the district. And they also, it's called general requirements. Think, think of that like they're out-of-pocket expenses they have to incur that are general to do the work they're doing. And of course, they get their overhead and profit fee, what's called throughout this report, simply their fee, their profit. So essentially, at the end of the day, they should get what they, they should, you should only be paying them what the project actually cost, that's the cost, and the plus, that's the overhead and profit, right? That's, that's the math. And then the GMP, now, they call it a guaranteed maximum price, but some of you know that's not really guaranteed. I don't like that term because it's subject to change orders. It's kind of a not to exceed unless there's change orders. Now, there can be change orders that come from the district side, simply a scope change, which you're like, the user board would have to approve that, you'd be fine with that. And there could be change orders where there might be some discussion as whether or not those qualifies change orders and whether or not the district should need, have to pay for that. And there was some of that that took, took place during the project. So that's the overall. And before change orders, the project, as you can see there, was 32.4 million was the project, okay? So then you have the results there, and what, what's, what here then are the actual amounts that were identified, and then there was some negotiations within that, because there are some things that are black and white, there are some things that are more gray. And so that vetting or, or vetting, we call it the vetting process, ultimately it's management's decision, we recommend to them what we think, and this was a result of that. So $42,517 was, was agreed to by WSI, the contractor, Wharton Smith, and that, that money comes back to the district. And then we kind of go into, and you see, well, there's, there's some of the details of that, and, and, you know, we'll go to the last page where it's all summarized here in a couple of minutes. Then you have some other things there that we always, what we always do in, in the course of our cost verification, we like to also, as we go, identify any what we call contract improvements or process better practices, and we've listed five of those there for you. We'll go through each one of them, but if you have questions, and we get to the question part, feel free to ask questions about that. So try to, some value-add stuff on top of the money being returned. Then I kind of did a high level, you then through the, the rest of that page in the background, if you want to go to the next page?
Next page.
Next page, please. Yeah, this is just kind of defining some terms, I've kind of talked about this at a very high level, to kind of get some definition around, since I know, you know, we don't all deal with this every day. You go to the next page? This is kind of a summary, sometimes people get a little bit confused of what the cost, the project really cost. So for example, you start with the $32,387, but then you go, wait a minute, my adjusted GMP was 22.8. Did we really save all that money? No, because what you're doing, as you know, is you're doing a direct purchase of the materials because you don't pay sales tax, and so you are getting that money back. And you can see, so we like, what we like to do is kind of get you the real cost of the project, is we break out the sales tax savings, which is real savings, there are also allowances that didn't get used, that's not really savings, right? It was an allowance built in, but it didn't get used. So just to kind of like, I, I like to do this recap, so you can kind of give a good transparency into what you were actual savings and what the project actually cost in the end. So for example, you come down, total project cost, 30.9 million, that's what the project really cost, okay? So the real savings then, the difference really relates to the sales tax savings, okay? So you did make, have some savings, but some, some will get in their heads, because the ODP reduction, the direct purchase reduction will think, oh, we saved 9.5, no, you did save, no, don't, yeah. Okay. I always like to have that as a, as a background, just so you could see that.
Ultimately, the, the project then came in 1.5 million under budget, what we thought going?
In terms of budget, right. So that's, that's important too, right? Because you want to, we budgeted this amount, how did we do? And, yeah, so, but, but the real project, yes, yeah, well, yes, I'll just, I don't want to complicate.
That's the simple, that's the simple answer for anybody watching this at home.
Yes. Yes, that's why I stopped myself. Stay in this, yeah, that's, that's right.
Real quick, correct me if I'm wrong enough to make this more difficult, but I'm, I'm understanding the, the owner-direct purchases, but it wouldn't be all that just from sales tax savings. What, I don't know if I'm following these numbers incorrectly, with the eight million and change, how much of that was roughly saved by sales tax, that times 7%?
The self-tax savings is right in the column there for you. It says tax savings, 4,000, 2,000, that's your real savings, to your point, yeah.
Got it.
That's your real savings. That's what I, that's why it's all broken out, so you can see that.
Yeah.
That's your real savings. You had a built-in, like, a good example is, in the budget, you had an $800,000 FF&amp;E allowance, furniture, fixtures and equipment, didn't get used. That's not real savings, right? It just didn't get used. Whoops. Okay. Good question.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right? Any other questions on that?
Do you anticipate, I mean, we don't ever get charged sales tax, so do you guys anticipate that in the?
Well, you do get, so, okay, good question. So if, if the subs buy their materials themselves?
Then they get charged.
They get charged, and guess who gets, gets charged? Then you do get charged.
Correct. Right.
And there is some of that on the job, but it's usually of the small dollar stuff?
It's the small things, correct. Like, hey, we need it, we need this to, hey, we need this, this delivery.
So we didn't get all the ODP, I mean, but we got all the big things.
Right. Right. You couldn't designate, you could not designate everything as an owner-direct purchase from a cost efficiency standpoint.
So they consider some of the costs then? I mean, they have to know?
Right. So they, so they, they works with, that's one of the things they do, he, he and his team work with WSI's team and say, okay, how much of this can we say? In fact, in the contract, it says, we want to kind of reach a minimum threshold.
Right.
Which is good, that's a good thing to have in there, because we know there's plenty of materials, we get that 7% savings on, if you take the state plus the, the local, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Six and a half.
Six and a half, and I think you get, then you get like the?
Five thousand is seven.
Yeah.
Eighty-five or seven, or you think it was five, it's six and a half.
Right. Right. Yeah. Exactly. So, but?
We would get a third of a penny back, right?
Yeah. Okay. Right.
I just feel like that's an easy way to start the contract, if you know you're going to get some of the sales tax.
Yes.
We're going to save you money, but, right.
It has, in fact, it has to be planned, because you have to structure it, the, in terms of the state, if you don't structure it properly, you can get, even though, it's not just a given, you have to structure it and say, we're going to do this as an ODP, there has, that's why the district themselves has to issue the purchase order. They can't just say, WSI take care of it. No. Then it's not a direct purchase.
Got it.
Yeah. Thank you. Good questions. All right. And then, the next page then, please? So this just tells you what we did, our objectives and approach, the big thing, and it kind of drills down, like I kind of alluded to this, but we really do it, you know, what you learn from those one through nine of those detailed testing, we're really drilling down. And so I might have overstated a little bit. So we look at 90% of the subcontract value in number four, and then we do sample testing around their payroll. But when we do sample testing, if there's like 10 people doing the, doing the work, and we look at everyone's payroll, essentially we've tested 100% of their payroll rate, you know, so, because it's the same rate repeated. And then we look at it holistically too. We make sure that if we, if we verify the so-and-so gets $40.50 an hour, we do, we do, we look at them for the whole project to make sure they always got that, plus, you know, plus any of the built-in rates that would happen. So we really, it's, you're not going to get this kind of coverage in any kind of audit, to be honest with you, internal audit or external audit. We really look at most, almost all the costs.
How difficult would it be when you're, when you're looking at the payroll to identify local subs versus out-of-town subs?
So subs are lump sums, so we're not looking at payroll subs. So subs are lump sums, so we're not looking at payroll subs. So, I mean payroll for subs.
Who are you looking at payroll?
We're looking at the payroll of Wharton Smith's team that are managing the project.
Never mind.
Okay. I, I know you're going with that, yeah. We don't have any transparency into that, yeah. Any, any questions? I just, I didn't want to stay high level here. Any questions about this kind of the procedures and what we do? It's detailed there for you, but, okay, all right. And then this just goes through each one. It gives explanations of what we identified and so first one deals with labor and burden.
Next page.
Oh, sorry, next page. I gotta be able to please Tom. So here we went through and this went back and forth quite a bit, but really we focus upon, so in this case, through our contract, we, remember we talked months ago, I got the question when we did the contract provisions, so how much did you save us? How much did we save? How much did we save? That's a good question. Let me, let's do the closeout first and I can, then I can objectively and quantitatively tell you what we saved. This is what you saved as a result. For example, before you even get the adjustment, which is not a large adjustment, right, 6,259, but remember, we already worked hard to, to, you know, together with you to say, you can't charge us more than 40%. So that capped off, so there, there was money they didn't even charge us, that there's savings there that other places without that cap, without that not to exceed, I've seen places charge as much as 65% in burden. So just by doing that contract, you could, you can kind of say, you can do the math and say, there's probably, based upon what they'll do in other places, you can save another 15, 20% by having that contract provision says you can't exceed 40%. And, you know, I've, I've, again, I've seen as high as 65% with what they'll charge other places sometimes. And so that, that in itself, so that's that cost avoidance, right? That's before this even shows up. So that $6,000 already is saved in the fact you've, we capped their burden rate at 40% in the contract itself. And this was additional to that. There was some, some savings around the markup. That just had to do with how much they're allowed to markup. So, so, so going back to the subcontractors, they do their lump sum bids, which is competitively bid, okay? And the, the construction manager, WSI, manages that for you and then, but there, there may be change orders for them. So in other words, it's, there might not be, it's not a change order increases what you, your $32 million GMP, but there's that, remember there's that contingency fund. The contingency fund that's in there is already in that budget. So what they're all, they're doing is they're taking, so the sub comes along, so I have some change orders here and, and it's becomes reviewed and approved by management and say, okay, that's, that's valid and that will come out of contingency, but they do get a profit and overhead markup on that. And so what this adjustment is saying is they didn't, there, there was this amount of money that wasn't properly taken, that markup. And so that comes, came back to the, the district as well. And then one of the larger adjustments, the largest adjustment here that we found with respect to our work dealt with liability and it's very interesting, this, we, we've done this before. It gets into their, how they determine their rates, they're partially self-insured, you know, so we look at all that and we actually work with our other office who works a lot with WSI. And so you can see here, we had, the most significant of our adjustments came out of the insurance calculation. And then, go to the last page?
Last.
All right. We'll have a, yeah. So on here then, this is the recap and you, and so what we do is, and so what we do is we start, this is where we really drill down. We start with their job costs, which is really, that's where they track all their costs, whether their costs that should be billed or not. We go to their cost document. What the district gets is their billing document. Those are two different things. They don't necessarily match and we're saying, well, this is a cost plus, so it should match, right? At the end of the day, their costs that they're going to bill should be supported by their cost detail, backing out any things that they had done, that, that shouldn't be billed, plus their overhead, their, their profit, because that won't be in the cost detail. And then if there's any other fixed, agreed upon fixed costs, okay? And so that's what this, this is a complete reconciliation, starting from the design builder, in this case, Wharton Smith detail. And so what I want to point out here is they know they're being audited, right? So they, it's like, they self, they self-identify then, they self-police. It's sort of like when the NCA comes in and says, we're going to come in, you might want to go in and clean your own house before we come in because if we find stuff, you're really in trouble, okay? So, yeah, but that's, so they understand that. So if you, so what they do is they went in and went through knowing the process and they went through and identified things. For example, again, see the number there? Okay, the, they add back for general liabilities because that is something that is, that's separately determined outside of the cost. That's why that's being added. So why is that being added? Because that's, that was a number that was agreed to by a certain percentage. Okay, you see later we have an adjustment, but that's what, based upon the percentage. Okay, well, this one then, what about general conditions costs over the not to exceed? Well, many contracts don't have a not to exceed at the level of general conditions. They just have that overall GMP number. Think about it, if the overall number, if they were to stay within the overall GMP number, they would have probably had plenty of money left over down below the line, as we say, to where they wouldn't have to pay this back. What we say is, no, the, the money for the subs, that's not your money in the first place, right? Your money deals with what you're being paid to do your job. So we're going to put a not to exceed in the general conditions and that's what that ended up being. So again, that's, that's a contractual thing that if we hadn't together done that with your team, you wouldn't have got that back, okay? And then there's a computer allowance, because of the way it works, it wasn't, they, they were allowed to add that, phone allowance, so you get some other, then you have a, a general non-billable, which we went through, looked through all this stuff. So the net of that, you go to the bottom, just to get a sense, so stuff that was identified, you know, before we even started auditing, they had to identify is if you go to the bottom there, the 132,740 then kind of came out of, I would say, we're going to come audit you, look at what the, what the contract says about these things and, and don't bill us anything, take everything out of there that's not really billable. That's the 132,740. So again, you can add that to the fact, if there's no audit, what, what incentive would there be to do that? Now, oh, I can't read their minds or their hearts, but I'm just saying, there's, the incentive is there to do that when you're being audited.
It took them a while to clean this up. That's why it took the audit so long. We were waiting and waiting and waiting for this job cost ledger.
Yeah.
They, they were going through it to clean it up because they know we would have caught it if they didn't clean it up, so.
When the agenda came out, I like was looking at this document, went back and like, wait, are we talking about Lake Pointe Cappella? I had to go back for a second and be like, wait.
Yeah.
It took months for them to clean this up.
Interesting for you to say.
Yeah, there was, there were various things, somebody, yeah, there was someone who was higher level that they got rid of and that created all kinds of issues. David could go, if he wanted to, he can go, no, he doesn't want to go into that. David, if you want to know about that, we're, you know? He's like, no.
He probably lived and breathed a lot more than we did.
No, yeah, so. And so, so like I said, this just summarizes and the effects of that and just calculates the adjustment. And so you can see then, we just, it's basically, it's just a reconciliation from their job costs, plus or minuses of the stuff they cleaned up, plus what we identified to your final numbers. That's where you got. And so the total, so the total net savings to the district is 175,257. You paid us less than that.
I was gonna ask, that was my question. How much did we pay you?
Yeah, less than that. I was with the change order, I don't, I don't know, you would know, Tom, I think it was.
Not, yeah, I don't, but.
Yeah, it was, what was it? Yeah, it was like, maybe it was like, it put the changer, we had adds, you know, there was, because they, we had to redo some things because they changed things, they, and the contractor side. It was probably around 45, 46 by the time we're done, something like that. So, well, more than, a lot more than you paid us to do it. Yeah, so.
And to understand those three numbers at the bottom, so Wharton Smith found the 132, you all found an additional 42.5 for a total savings of the 175.
Correct.
Got it.
Any questions?
Head nodding, I guess people are excited about finding the savings. Any other questions or comments?
No, the only, the only one that apparently I missed in the very beginning, Mr. Parker and I've had a conversation about it, is we apparently allowed them to purchase equipment, computer, computers specifically. At, it's only $5,700, but this is just a buck. You already know how this irritates me.
Yeah, I know. It's me too.
So do we get this computer?
There were many things I kept pointing out that irritates me when, but it's in the contract, it's.
Okay, that's where we need to be more on the front.
And that was in the beginning, if you, you want to go back.
No, 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 I believe that it was in there and I missed it because it, that drives me absolutely nuts.
Yeah, me too.
Did that stay in there for real, Cole?
But if they.
Did that, did those things that.
The general conditions.
Yeah, did that stay in there for real, Cole? Like, are we going to see that again on the next one?
Do I get to buy more new computers?
Yeah.
It's in the, and now we.
And that's pretty standard.
Sure.
Although I believe we want to look at possibly changes.
We 1,000% want to look at changes now. It's ridiculous, so.
So did we keep the computer? Did they give them to us when they're done?
No.
So they're going to go buy more new ones? What are they doing with the old ones?
As long as I'm here, if this comes forward again and they have it in their general conditions, it's not going to go well. That's all I can say about that. I am way over having to police in their general conditions. We're buying gasoline and we're buying office desk and it's ridiculous. And we're paying for gas. In the, the most recent one, they're asking us to pay for gas for an out-of-town contractor to drive back and forth. It's ridiculous.
Repairs to vehicles, flat tire, I mean, it's just, it goes on and on, but, but you know.
And they're getting 4.75%.
Yes.
And so about 12 million bucks and they're billing us for gasoline. Are you frickin' crazy? Okay. So obviously missed. Missed twice, but it's not going to be missed anymore. Bye, Mr. Parker.
Just real quick, over the years, I've been asked by board members and by committee members alike, why use an outside auditor versus the internal auditor? Well, this is a very good example. It's a perfect example of why we want to bring expertise into the room. You know, as Rob said, they have a multitude of offices that do a multitude of similar things, so they have a big learning curve. We're just this little, you know, one area with one auditor, so we wouldn't have that expertise. They, they can help us with contracts, they can help us with questions we have. Same thing with IT auditors. So at the audit committee level, we look at these type of things. Years past, prior lawyers, prior boards, we've had contractors where the audit came as a result of litigation, not as a result of cost savings. And you know, as they said, we, we do make money on these at the end of it. And, and even though Wharton Smith, you know, self-audited and, and brought 100 plus, how much of that would have been there had we not had these guys out there looking?
Yep.
So this is the one audit that doesn't just go on its bookshelf and get dusty for a while. It actually has discernible benefit for the district. So when we look at these type of things, we look at materiality. Well, these things are your biggest individual purchases, these schools, right? What's the risk? Well, as you see, these are very complicated things to keep track of. We've got legal issues, we have the statutes out there that affect things, we have contracts, you know, and so we have to delve through this. And the risk is higher when you get into more, more complexity, so we need more and more knowledge to, to help minimize that risk to us. And that's the way we look at most of these outside auditors, you know, audits. So I just wanted to bring that up for, since we're talking about the audit.
Good point. Great point. Appreciate it, thank you. I suppose in the ideal world, now that we are aware of these findings that you had, that we will address those next go-around, so we wouldn't necessarily count it as a, a loss if the savings don't come back as big in ACA, right? That they would have.
Especially when we're theoretically building the same school with the same construction manager. Hopefully we can continue to improve over those things, so.
Yeah, just, just as an example, we've been doing Orange County public schools for years and they have us audit every major project and we still find turnover. And you think, it's the same, a lot of them are the same contractors. So you think at some point, can we stop auditing? Can we stop doing this? There's, you know, has it run its course now because everyone's very able to comply the cleanup? The answer's evidently, I can't tell you why, but the answer's no.
Well, would some of it have to do with like, I, I just think about how difficult it is for subcontractors to keep employees and I know there's a lot of turnover in those fields and like things are happening all, I, I just, how, what is their continuity on their job sites and, and their employees as well? So I'm sure that when they get new employees, they don't share the audit results with them and this is the school district here and this is this district here and so then there's, you know what I'm saying?
That could be part, sure, that could be part.
So, I mean, not, I don't think we have quite that. I know Mr. Parker and you guys have been here for quite some time, but it takes it a minute to get it under, under our belt, so maybe that's what it is.
And you've also participated in, in designing the contract for us or?
Yeah, so.
Through our contract?
Right, so for you, for you, it's been a couple of years now, right? So we went through and helped add, like again, like the 40% labor cap, burden cap. Again, that's something that's an annuity, right? We, you paid us to help with the contract and you only had to pay us once for that, now that's an annuity value too, right? So I tell people that's, I, I try, I always encourage them, don't, don't, you know, it's worth the money to have us do the contract. Ah, it seems a little expensive to help us with the contract. No, trust me, you're going to get an annuity saving, it's going to pay for itself 10 times more. And so that 40%, again, that's not actually in there, right? But you know, again, you can do the math, Mr. Mathias, you probably do the math right away, as quick as you are at the bath, but you do the bath, say, give me the labor charge, add another 20% and that's what you would have been, would have been billed. And you had to pay it if the contract didn't say you could, didn't have, didn't have to, so, yeah.
Very good report.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Tom, I think you own the next topic as well.
I do. I actually own the next three topics. You get me for the next three topics. Okay, the next topic is the internal audit plan for 2324. I've had individual meetings with each of you, so can we bring that presentation up? It's the risk assessment and internal, there we go.
Okay, next slide. As you know, I've, I met with each of the department directors, talked about their audit universe in their department, talked about risk, and we redid the risk evaluation sheet for their areas. I summarized those all up. In addition, I've looked at what other school districts are doing in their audit work, basically by visiting their website and occasionally I do talk with some of them, so I had some conversations with a few. I looked at what the state auditor general completed in their operational audits for the year 2022 and into early '23, based on the reports on their website. And what I do there is I look at all those reports, I break them down in a spreadsheet and do a summary and to find out what are the most common findings amongst all the school districts in Florida. Analyzed our high-dollar vendor spends that we do, basically in '21, '22, I believe was the year I used for that. And then I had a meeting with the state audit general, since they were onsite, talked about what they were doing. They shared with me a little bit of what they knew about what the federal auditors would be doing in the school district. So, taking all that into consideration, next slide. I came up with, obviously, this nice packet report here that I developed and talking about, looking at what the district's strengths and weaknesses were, where maybe improvements in the operations could be made, potential cost savings, and looking at how current events may impact our operations within our school district. Next slide. I'm not gonna go over this, but I provided each of you, I think, the 11 by 17 version, which obviously is a lot, lot easier to read, but this is obviously the first page of, I think it was somewhere in a neighborhood on 11 by 17, it's close to eight pages long or five or eight pages long. But just looking, if you remember, on this far right side of this, I put in, or I did my best to put in what I known has been audited in basically the last three years to kind of give you comfort and these are sorted, obviously, high-risk to low-risk, so this page represents a lot of the high risks in the, in the school district based on the meetings with the department directors. And then I captured, as I said here on the right side, what I know has been or is maybe currently being audited currently in the last three years. And then the next column over to the furthest right, as well, it was a financial audit, an operational audit, et cetera. Next slide.
Tom, on that page real quick, if I may. The top two things on your list don't have anything next to it. Are those audited by the state at some points in time or how do those generally work? Based on your algorithm?
I just couldn't directly tie them to an audit. It doesn't mean that they probably haven't been looked at, you know, in the process. But as far as a direct audit on those two subjects, which would be, you know, the department and the area, and you can't read it, it's very hard, alternate education programs and facilitator, boy, I can't even read it. Yeah, so, just couldn't tie anything directly to those. But if, you know, it comes down to directly as the board, you know, do you see a need? You know, is there a direct need for those to be looked at? They're high-risk based on what they do in those areas and that really came from the department director. Maybe the complexity of that area as it relates to laws, regulations, maybe the fact they don't have enough resources to put towards that. So, a lot of factors in what drive the, what the department manager or director thought caused the risk.
Sure.
And driving it higher.
Yep.
That's all.
Looking at that and looking at the final report, if those are the highest risk factors in your mind and others' minds, why they're, they're not audited, just posing the question.
Wasn't necessarily in my mind. It was more, I used their input this time. And I didn't use anything that would, from my view, that would change that, as I did last time. Okay, next slide is the beginning of the internal audit plan and it goes for the next, actually, couple of slides. So, number one, the physical inventories, you already approved that and I've done that. As a matter of fact, last Thursday and Friday, I was working on the audit report, so I'm just finishing that one up. The rollover, the standard operating procedures, it's all done. I'm taking it to the audit committee next week. And I've reached out, I'll be working on the custodial service audit, finalizing that, the latter part of this month, and obviously, writing the report should be done hopefully in November, early November. Construction audit for Arroyo Coal Academy, just talked with Mr. Parker and I talked with Mr. Carr last week. We need to get a meeting going on that and to begin kicking off that audit here later this month to early in November. Number four, we'll talk about the internship program because that's coming up here in a couple of points, but it's a Title IX project. It's recommended that we look at that in the school district and see how our athletic programs are doing facing the Title IX. And we'll be doing an audit there. And that'll be an ongoing audit as we look across the school district year after year because a lot of things change in the high schools each year and that could affect our ability to meet Title IX requirements. Next slide, number five, is the construction audit of Fruitland Park, Lincoln Park and Mineola K8. And I understand during the course of this month, you'll be looking at kicking those or approving those projects to begin. So, later this year, obviously, be looking at the pay apps into next year. Be looking at the pay apps on those projects, but we actually won't be doing the construction projects on that probably till the following year, maybe even a little bit further down the road than that. Depends on when they finish. Number six is a medical claims payment audit. And from here, these, these, these projects, initially, what I had done if, from my meetings with you, because this changed a little bit, I had kind of put from here forward, kind of to do special projects because I didn't want to start anything that I couldn't finish for the school district. However, Mr. Ward brought forward a report from Lee County that the state auditors looked at and they have had a gap because they had an issue with, they outsourced their auditing to a public accounting firm and they had an issue with them and let a gap of six months go by without doing audit work. So, the state auditors rode them up. So, Mr. Ward came in and said, you know, Tom, you ought to reconsider, you know, this gap of just doing special projects because it may, may not look like we're doing auditing for, you know, four or five months. So, with that, I came back in and looked at potentially what we could do, some from recommendations that you made while we were meeting, doing individual meetings. And I picked one of them as a medical claims payment audit. And I look at this as, you know, to look at medical claims, this takes a specialty, so we'd have to outsource that piece of it. But then there's a lot of, there's other pieces of it that I could look at internally that we do is, you know, how we make payment for all those, you know, the reports that come in and then we make the payments going out. So, we could outsource the medical claims piece that takes special auditing expertise. They look at, what they do is they basically look at the high-dollar claims to see if we can find savings in those. And then I could look at internally, look at the process that we go through to make those payments to our third party. So, that was number six. Number seven, Mr. Ward came to me with a recommendation, looking at a construction quality audit. And that has to do with Lake Point Academy. I guess there's been some, some issues there where some, some work had to be done afterwards and that, and he wanted me to look at, you know, what we could do going forward to make recommendations so that, you know, what, what are we at? Two years after and not even quite two years after? And we're already, you know, we're fixing things that maybe if we had a quality construction done, then, you know, we wouldn't have these issues. So, he wanted to be, he made a recommendation to look at. I thought it was very good and I looked at his.
Oh, go ahead, finish that.
Go ahead, no, no.
On that one, at a high level, what kind of things are you gonna be looking at in the field? Because that just seems like a pretty niche topic to.
Initially, talking with the principal as far as, you know, what issues there are. Maybe there's things that haven't even been fixed yet. And then two, looking at work orders that we've already had done and completed and maybe even had to outsource work that.
Just a lot of hours of your time, just trying to figure out how, in the field, looking at all that stuff. I agree, it's not a work looking at, but just trying to figure out that scope.
Yeah, so, and I reached out to some others, like, I mean, Mr. Burleyan mentioned that, you know, Orange County does a lot and I reached out to their director to see, and she, and she indicated to me, we've had a lot of issues on construction, but they've never done an audit on that. But she knows what I'm talking about.
Great project.
So, you know, I was, you know, gonna hopefully reach out to them for a little insight into some of the areas that they were hearing about in their projects as well because like Mr. Burleyan said, a lot of those construction companies are obviously the same ones we're using up here too, so.
So, is this looking at, because there comes a warranty period, a general contractor. Are you looking at items that were hidden defects that would extend that warranty? Or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, or missed, yeah, yeah, I wanted to look at the warranties too. That was in my mind to say, you know, should that have been a warranty repair? Or should that have been recommended as a warranty item?
And even if it's under a specific period of time, one year's.
Yeah, should we look for a longer warranty?
Or if there was a hidden defect, then it extends that warranty.
Yep.
But then who, how do you do that? How do you determine that?
Determine, I would, I'd be working closely with Mr. Parker, obviously.
You would? Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, from the very beginning too, I may have missed him when I.
And this is actually the first time I'm hearing that. Did you know of these defects at?
I just learned of it when we were, when we were meeting and you'd said, or I think, I circled with you and asked if you had suggestions and.
Are these pretty serious defects?
At this point, I don't know if they're ser.
I think there was mentioned one about the track or something around.
There was some, some items that were brought up that seemed like you wouldn't be repairing them as quickly. I don't necessarily know if it was termed defect, but I think my, my thought was, when I was having this communication with Mr. Mock, was what can we do better as a district to make sure we're contracting to protect ourselves better? And then also doing the monitoring that we need to do during the construction to make sure that we're covering all of our bases to ensure that the contractors are doing what they're supposed to. It may be something that was gonna fail anyway. It may be a design issue. So, we just need to figure out what's the cause and how do we address correcting that in the future?
Are we maybe interested in addressing this one sooner than, than March or April?
Like before we start building another school?
So, like, I'm looking at, okay, I know, I know.
We could have things around.
This began back in July, right? And so, but like, your Title IX project with the intern if approved would be September, October, which would be about now. I mean, should we maybe switch those around? Because obviously, you don't have an intern yet. And we haven't even had that discussion yet. That's 3.05. So, I wonder if maybe this one could slide higher in priority for us to address this as we're moving forward with construction in places.
So, I have a comment about, or I have a question. When you're gonna be looking at things that perhaps could be improved with the schools, are you gonna compare that to the punch list? Because for me, as a principal, that was a problem. I was involved in construction twice and both times, it became my responsibility kind of to nag and make sure everything on that punch list. And I think if you did that, some of the other things would be eliminated because a lot of times, if the punch list doesn't get completed, there are things on there that turn up as a problem that could have been on the warranty at the time and should have been fixed. One particular thing comes to mind is that Carver, and I went there years after their remodeling. They had a serious problem with water by the front door. I'm sure Mrs. Smith, you remember that. And it would flood anytime it rained and it had been that way for years and somehow just didn't get fixed. So, I know that kind of stuff happens.
Yeah, I think when I was doing, not this custodial, I think I was doing something else and we were walking the schools and there were certain things and I was asking them about those. And they said, well, that's always been an issue. And I'm like, that don't make sense. That's always been an issue, so. But yeah, I know what you're saying. I know exactly what you're saying.
Sorry again, but two quick points, hopefully quick.
You again?
Yeah, I'll leave, I can leave in a minute. First of all, to me, this is a highly technical issue, okay? So, when we see something like this, you know, the question that pops to my mind is, okay, it shouldn't fall on Mrs. Cunningham or any other principal to be an institutional expert on construction, right? You know, they have to deal with the stuff at the end when it doesn't get fixed. So, if there's a problem, and I don't know what the nature of it is, but if there's a problem, then it got through the inspection process. So, whether it's Mr. Mock or Mr. Benny or Mr. Ward, we do not, I've never built a track in my life, right? I've never built a building in my life. This to me is technical. If we're gonna do this right and we're gonna have cost savings down the road, this is something that probably needs to be outsourced. Same thing with education related. Mrs. Cunningham and I have had this conversation. She's not gonna come in and do a financial audit and I'm not gonna try to run a school, right? It's just not what we, well, maybe she can do a financial audit, but I can't run a school, right? So, we have to look at, when we approve these, what's the expertise that's needed? We need to do a better job at the audit committee and we're trying to improve on that. But my second point is to what Mr. Brandonberg brought up, and that's scope. And I've heard this a few times from different board members recently and in the past. Okay, you wanna look at this. What does that mean? What are you looking at? What is your, you know, desired, not outcome, because we don't look for outcomes, but what are we looking at and what is our concern? So, you know, if someone comes to you and says, my audit is A, and you don't know what A is, I encourage you, like Mr. Brandonberg, just to challenge them as to what are you looking at and what, what is the cause for your audit? It's most cost-effective and it also ends up solving some problems at the end when the report comes out there and you don't understand what exactly he was looking at and does it make any sense to you? So, we look at, we're looking harder at the scope too. And Mr. Mock, sometimes we have a hard time conveying that to him because he knows what he wants in his head. And then Mr. Mock's out here on island on his own trying to do these things and he knows what he wants to do. Now, he's gonna convey it to 10 different people and get 10 different forms of input and keep everybody going in the same direction. So, thank you for that and I would encourage more of that.
And to your point there, that was kind of the intent of the original question. Mr. Mock's a man of many, many talents, but just what do we get into on field work and looking at a school? And then internal versus external, I, quite frankly, I'd rather an internal person do this just so we're not justifying the cost of the project and saying, oh, we found the savings to justify what we paid it. But at the same time, it is a big-ticket item long-term. We're building the same school over and over again. This prototype's not going anywhere, so if we can find real savings and real defects, it's certainly worth it. And I think it's a good audit to make sure we get right.
Yeah, and to Mr. Benny's point, if I may add something, you know, with, Rob was here and, you know, it's great. A lot of what Rob found in the report, if you remember when I did my last, I think it was, my first one was Eustace Heights, I made a lot of those recommendations. What the difference between what I did and what he did? He has the people to go depth into it, I mean, and dig deep. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I just, I don't have four or five people working behind me like he does to be able to dig deep. I mean, I saw some of his spreadsheets and I was like, wow, the amount of time that those spreadsheets took. I mean, it took, look how long it took him. It would, I would have done nothing but that for, I don't know how long. I mean, and that's the difference. And I think Mr. Benny's bringing that point up is like, you know, what do you want him to do? Do you want him to sit here and dig deep on all this stuff? But I think, to me, it's interesting, I can come up with the same findings only because I can see what's wrong.
Well, it's just when you shift from the financial PO side to the structural integrity side. I mean, that's a whole nother skill set of seeing, okay, this plumbing is going here and this problem could exist down the road here and what that means financially. But in the short term, you gotta know what you're looking at.
Exactly. I can see there was a problem, like, yeah, that's defective and we got a big problem, you know, and then, you know, talk to the right people and say, how did this happen? Why did it happen? You know, but, you know, if I have the right experience and quality, you know, to get down into the engineering fact of it and all this and come in to say, well, wasn't engineered correctly? And, you know, I just don't have that expertise.
Which the typical is gonna be from the contractor and it may be truthful, is they just built what was on the plan. So, it kind of starts there.
Yeah, sure.
And, and we found that at Mineola High School four or five years ago where water was coming down on the inside of the brick. And it turned out it was a flashing detail that was, that was defective. And in that case, I don't think we pursued it legally, but it was hidden defect. That the warranty.
There was an emissions.
That's right. So, I encourage us to do it, but I don't remember if we did or not, which had we, I think I would have remembered.
Yeah, there's a lot of those in the designs. Things like you can open a door and things like that.
Then this guy's gonna justify his work and this guy's gonna justify, and then ultimately, you want the design to be proper moving forward, but also then did the install happen properly?
Well, we'll keep using the same design, yeah, if we're not catching those things early, we're gonna go with three, four.
And that's why, that's why I haven't heard, this is, this meeting is the first time I've heard that we had issues with that school. And now then we're building from that prototype, one, two. Yeah. Run our third on that prototype.
So, timeline, it seems like we need to pull this one forward.
And I made, I'll make those changes and push it forward.
Sure. Now, do you concur with Mr. Benny that this would be one that would be better outsourced?
Depends on what the issues are. You know, you don't know that. I think what it might entail is bringing in experts to give you.
So, maybe a co-sourcing?
A guidance on what the problems are. And like I said, I.
So, what does that look like?
I was gonna be working with Mr. Parker because in a lot of cases, that, I mean, they have knowledge and expertise.
So, does that mean like you wanna get into it and see, see what things and then maybe execute?
Yeah, because I think at this point, it's an unknown.
This is one of those areas that you have an auditor, so you hear audit, you instantaneously think audit. Okay, to me, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a construction quality issue, but is it an audit? I mean, is it something that the internal auditors qualified to do? I would subject, he could teach himself, but it's not worth the money to do that. The other thing is, again, back to my point of, is there a problem with the inspection process? Is there, is there a problem on the construction side or is it a problem on our side? You know, when we're taking possession of the school? So, and I think that Tom could do it. It would take him a long time, but he has never done it before. Whereas another place, and I'm not selling CRI, but we know they have the experience and they do it at other schools. I think we have an audit committee meeting next week. We could clearly discuss it in detail and then come back to a recommendation through Ms. Cunningham or through Mr. Mock to you as far, my gut feeling would be that the audit committee's gonna wanna outsource it just because of the skill involved and because it does have long-term effects. We're talking about three schools for sure, possibly more down the road. So, to me, this is one that we would want to outsource. Plus, Mr. Mock has a lot on his plate with other things that we don't want him to get distracted from.
Well, I don't make a mountain out of a molehill, but it certainly seems to me that I'd like to know what those issues are first and foremost, before we decide which direction to go, so.
Can we talk about that at the audit committee meeting and have, get a little more detail or do you want to do it now?
I would just recommend that maybe what you want to do is to initially have Tom actually do some interviewing and actually do some, maybe look at the work orders and then.
I'd be totally comfortable with merely listening to, from Dave Parker's perspective, to be very honest. He's boots on the ground when it comes to this.
He left, sorry.
I mean, you could certainly look at the, how many, very quickly, you could bench look at how many warranty calls we've had on the school. I don't, that would be helpful, probably.
Sure, I think, I think interviewing Calvin, Dave, principal, looking at the work orders, you can kind of get an idea of maybe where some of the problems are and then bring the expert in, where those problem areas are. You may not need, you may not need 10 different experts. You may only need one or two, so.
Could we move this chairman up and let him assemble that information for us?
That seems understandable to me.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that statement, but at the same time, I would think a full-blown outsourced audit of this, being the first school we've done with two more already planned and more down the pike, would be appropriate regardless of what they find, just to, if anything, give us the peace of mind that this design works and that it is working appropriately and little things are gonna come through, but I don't know.
Going back to what we discussed earlier, scope is important. So, I think doing what Mr. Ward said, at least getting the nature of the. So I think doing what Mr. Ward said, at least getting the nature of the problems would help us direct, whether it's the internal auditor or an external auditor, as to what they need to be looking at. And then they can, if they need to expand and they find other areas, then they can expand into areas they feel necessary.
Absolutely. I think it would be beneficial for the board to just see what initially, what are those sorts of challenges and figure out, you know, to what depth of, we need to bring in the outside expertise.
And is it just with the one school or have we already had issues with?
I can ask that question.
How are we doing on Mineola since we did the addition? That kind of thing.
And the cafeteria at Cypress Ridge.
Well, I think we're in full agreement though, moving the timeline, but I think you've already taken that out of note there.
But the timeline's important to now de-get the information.
That's right. Yeah, just start getting the information so that way we can figure out how to proceed from there.
Okay.
All right.
And then number eight was obviously, I don't know the timeline on this, but I've already, I think I shared with some of you, if not all of you, been creating a long list of everything, of knowledge that I'd like to transfer to the incoming director of internal auditing. And it seems like the list keeps growing, but I'm not adding as much currently as I had initially, so. But I know it's a list of 30 or 40 items roughly now, so, and just making sure that, you know, what I didn't get taught when I came on board, that does get transferred to the new person coming in. I think it'll be a much easier transition. I think somebody said add a long learning curve, hoping to shorten that for the new individual that would be taking over. And I think that makes it more valuable to y'all, to the school board. Then I had some out, on the next slide, I had some outsourced projects, number nine through 12. The first, number nine, facility administrative office space performance audit. This project again came from Mr. Ward and Kelly Randall, as far as a project to look at all this space, all this administrative space that we have scattered across Lake County and how it's all broken up, to look at how we can gain some efficiencies and effectiveness by maybe re-coordinating it. And then also, I mean, I gave a lot of recommendations or a few recommendations to this for the RFQ that's going out. Some other things that we were talking about, if you remember years ago, when we had the Gates Foundation money, we did look at, look at what, one district office potentially. So, and there was never a report, I know Ms. Luke and I talked about that, but I never could find a report. I mean, I looked on all the school board docs to see if we could find where a report, I found like one little presentation, I think, that was given early on, but it was never brought forth to an ending, so I think we must have canned that before the conclusion was reached. So this is a big project to look at. The district and I guess with the new Lincoln Park, you know, what, you know, who or what will eventually be going over there as far as administrative office space. It'll, it'll be a valuable information drop to the school board, I think, as far as what the district looks like, because we are rather scattered. And that was, I think, the point of the other project as well, but we never came to any recommendation to the school board from that. So, and I also added in there, I think it's beneficial, even if we can't accomplish it today, you know, what efficiencies would be gained if a district office was built that everyone could come together and how would that, you know, potentially positively impact the school district overall if that could be accomplished, you know, if, you know, big if there. But, because, you know, it would cost a lot of money to build a building or it would cost probably a lot of money to lease something that would be large enough and could be fitted to run a district office out of.
And to that point, this is a conversation for another day and probably more of a Kelly question than anything, but as we keep building these new schools and thinking about spots for our regional teams, region one, region two, region three, could you build on some additional space at a school to house those folks so they're on a campus but geographically located to serve those needs better? I just, I don't know with FISH and everything else if that's allowed or not, but
Today we put portables out there.
Would be more efficient use of space and school sites moving forward, so that's a good point.
Yeah. And the next project was the Wellness Center, and this is a rollover. The reason for the rollovers obviously is the construction audits were taking so long to accomplish. And number 11 is the ESE audit, which is a rollover as well. And then number 12 is just the Arriaco Academy construction audit. Down below, accounting for my administrative time, obviously cut back a lot of that mainly because it probably, you know, my seminar and training is finishing up this year, I won't need any next year. Vacation and sick time's still the same. And then the, I upped the administrative time for audit committee meetings and school boards just because I feel, you know, there's probably a lot of work done for the incoming, looking for the director position and the work I'll be doing there. I've already done a lot just on the job descriptions and the job postings to help the audit committee. I'm sure there's be a little bit more work coming next year on that as well. So with that, and then on the last slide, number eight, on the eighth slide, I kept track of these alternate audit projects that we discussed in our individual meetings and I just kind of listed them here. If there's a need or something arises that we need to do those quickly, obviously we could outsource any of those projects. Potentially, if we hire in the new person, if we're able to find them fairly quickly, you know, we might pick up some audit resource time in the first part of the year, so we might want to revisit one of these projects. It's hard to put it on here now because you don't know exactly when that person's going to start, but let's say we, maybe they found them right out of the chute and that person starts in March, April, you know, there might be a project here maybe we could accomplish. If so, I think we could bring that to the school board and say, hey, you know, it looks like we got some audit time and we need a project to do and let's pick one of these alternate audit projects or if something else rises to the top.
I had something I was thinking about. I got a call at the end of last week and I get this call at the same time every year and it seems like it's the last like three years. And it's regarding driver's education, so I don't know if you guys have gotten any phone calls, but it seems like that program, and I'm only familiar with it from the work that you and I did, it's funded by a grant. I spoke to the superintendent about it briefly at the end of the week. It's funded by a grant. It seems to me that it's entitlement dollars, you just have to fill out the paperwork, but something's, there's a miss. And I know we've had some change in leadership in that department that it's housed under, I know you're aware of that. But it seems like each year now there's this gap and from when we start driving the program and there's miscommunication happening with students and parents. And so with it being new leadership and with it being a grant funding and with there being, our employees are the ones that are hired additionally. Apparently it's a good extra income for our employees that do participate in the program. I had, I had asked her what her thoughts were about me presenting it today as an opportunity for an additional consideration for an alternative audit and she thought that it would be right in Europe, an easy area to cover that wouldn't take much time. But I don't feel like some of the things that we've talked about today are obviously way more pressing, but it is, it, when it comes up this many times, there's a startup issue that's happening. So I think it would be beneficial to look at. It is a resource for our students and our teachers to consider that way.
Tom, you're at, just so in quick language, you're done June of 2024?
June 30th, 2024, yes, sir.
You have accumulated time you intend to use that would, you'd be gone, but.
I do have accumulated time and obviously I want to use, save a lot of that time and use while my son's playing baseball. It'll be his last year at Troy. So I'll be taking like some Fridays and Mondays mainly off. And the reason why is because I want to go to the away games, which is what I did not do most of his college career. So I want to, they're going, I know they're going to Texas State and a few others that are kind of longer trips, it'll
So he will be leaving early in the spring.
But you already have that in your schedule, those 80 hours.
Yeah.
He's got 80 hours in the
And you're going to use it over a period of time or you're going to take
Over a period of time. I will take it.
So June 30th is your deal.
I was going to see if he was leaving.
You'll be working up to that day.
Yes, sir. That's my plans.
Okay. And you, you're proposing we do the hire-win? When do we bring somebody on board?
I don't know.
In a perfect world.
Don't look alike.
Okay. So what we did, we talked to HR and, you know, we're trying to balance, if you go too early and you don't want this person to start to this date, then they're not going to wait. If you go too late, then you risk not having someone when Tom leaves and then you have that gap like Scott brought up. So we're thinking, based on our conversations with HR, early, late winter, early spring, like the January, February timeframe.
You average?
Right? And that gives us to June. To get somebody in, we need, what did we say, about 45 days maybe?
Takes four to six weeks to get the applications in. And if you don't get enough, then you'll have to repost, so, and that's what happened last time. I know you can't remember 10 years ago, but The problem last time was is they posted a job that went out and very few applicants come in with the qualifications, so they reposted a job on some different areas.
The strength of this board has been that we recognize that we want to have some time for that person to come on board and then to hand off. And so
I would say 60 days.
That's what I'm really trying to get to.
60 days would be the least in my mind to help transition everything that needs to go.
So this is April.
90 would be
Mr. Mathias, if you would feel better, we can request HR to come to our audit committee next week and we can try to lay out a more structured timeline for you and Ms.
Well, no, I think, I think we're going to be able to lay it out as a board really quickly. So if we said, end of April, May?
I'd say May 1st start.
April, May is when we'd like to see somebody on board. Does that sound?
Yes.
And then just have HR backing up?
Correct.
End of May is a little, little
End of April, beginning of May.
End of April, beginning of May, I'm sorry.
I think if they started at the beginning of April, I would be very comfortable in transitioning all the knowledge, but trust me, if I had 60 days, I would be happy as well.
Compromise, April 15th.
You're not going to get what you want, so.
April 15th or a bit before.
Yeah, we don't even split hairs over a couple of weeks. And looking at these alternative audits, I mean, all of these are great ideas and things that are worth looking at, but I don't see what you'd take off from the other list you've got here, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you get this person a week and a half early, then, and you transition all your knowledge, put them to work.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather risk paying him an extra week and a half than not having somebody, you know?
And the question would be for HR, it would be, do we put a proposed start date in there so that the applicants know, you know, sometimes it's easier because if you apply in January and you want to start in February, then you're going to, you know, you're going to lose a whole bunch of people.
Yeah, that's something I didn't know when you all were, when the school board was looking for the last job, it's like, okay, well, when's the start date?
Right.
You know, the feedback I got was, well, when the board approves.
Yeah.
So the process would be, you apply in January, right? Is that, that's when you can open it up?
So basically you answered your own question, right?
Well, I'm working it backwards. I'm still trying to get my hands around, in January you put
You post the position.
You post the position.
You post it in January and then
And it posts for how long a month?
Whatever standard is for
I would say you probably need to go a couple of weeks and see how that goes when the quality of the applicants look like.
Yes, first of the year, you probably want at least
Where does it post? Just on our website or?
I imagine we'll market it through, you know, a different avenue.
Yeah, we had the conversation with HR and they were looking at it. There's, you know, there's specific sites out there.
Sites that you are specific.
Skill set, so.
It's a professional position, so.
HR's already working on it. They know what they're doing.
So in March then, let's say hypothetically we have it in March, is the interview, I didn't even remember how you got hired, did it go to the audit committee?
I'll tell you, the position got posted, they whittled it down to, my understanding, whittled it down to, I think, three applicants. We came in and had a person, one-on-one interview with the committee.
With the audit committee?
Whoever the committee members, I don't think all of them were audit committee, but there was an audit committee member there.
It was primarily the committee, we had the auditor from the county help us out.
Yes, he was there and, so there, alls I know is there was 12 people.
Kurt, did you make a recommendation then?
What?
Did you make a recommendation to us?
Uh, yeah. I mean, you guys have to approve it, but I believe they pushed a prioritize list to you and you looked at two or three people? I can't remember exactly.
Did we interview after you guys, after the committee? Did we interview after the committee?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Because we whittled it down, we don't want you guys to have to go through 20 or 40, unless you went to, it's your privilege, but we whittled it down to, you know, no more than five or three to five, yeah.
I think it was three.
You know, depending on the quality, if there's only three, then we wouldn't send you two just to fill a quota, but, yeah, no, absolutely. And then, you know, we'll come up with a list and we'll send it to you and then you'll make, hopefully prior to that, you make a decision whether you want to interview or whether you're going to, how you want to look at the information, however you want to handle it, so we can structure it that way.
It's going to be tight, but I think we can make the April 15th. I don't think we can hire before that based on this timeline and it, and working in when it comes to the board and all that business. So, okay. I have a better sense about it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I know that we need to do, I believe if you use the similar methodology that you did for the superintendent, you can get it through, I think, whether it's one-on-one or however you want to handle it or public hearings.
I was even thinking with the lawyer, they came and did it in a workshop setting and they just came and interviewed in front of us that one day for the lawyer position. I'm just thinking about our employees, so each firm came and did their presentation for us to make a decision.
Yeah, I would think that between HR and the audit committee, whittle it down to three and then we do like what we're doing on the construction jobs and trying to, we make the decision instead of putting somebody on a shortlist and then go on one versus two and all that kind of stuff. It's a big enough decision, the reports to us.
And I can't emphasize enough, we try our best, we have some knowledge, you know, but at the end of the day, you know, this is a person that has to garner your trust and you have to have a good working relationship with them. They're your employee. So we may give you one, two and three, I wouldn't even want to rank them that, I think.
That's what I'm saying, no, I don't want you to rank them either.
Yeah, no, we would just give you three and say, more power to you, and if you don't like those three, we'll have three more. But we should be able to get a right in three to five, I would think.
Just keep in mind, whatever, whatever committee, if it's committee that does the whittling down of the initial appeals, that's all held in sunshine though.
Yep.
Otherwise he goes
There'd be an audit committee meeting.
Review an audit committee meeting.
Unless the board wants, unless the board wants somebody else on the committee, we could still do it in an audit committee meeting, we'd just have extra people.
Well, is there, is there some value in the expertise of other people in the, in the district, I mean, like Scott Ward, right?
Scott is
Scott's here, non-voting member of the committee.
He's part of He's partnered.
Mr. Myers is there when he shows.
Okay.
But he won't be there. I think that.
Yeah. We'd like to pre-invite you for that one.
I, I will be there.
I think we use courage relationship with, like if you wanted to bring the auditor from the county, I don't think that would be terrible. It's up to you, who you have on your committee to, to interview.
We can, I'll talk to Mrs. Cunningham about it and we'll, we'll come up with.
Totally, okay. Thank you very much for, I just tried to get a sense of.
That's a good point. It's very good.
All right, thanks. Okay. You ready to do something else?
Yeah. Real quick, I'll make the changes to this, submit them to Ms.
That's right, and when should we see that on our agenda? Before Monday?
You got, it's on the agenda for Monday. So it would obviously be done today.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I have to go, I know it'll break your hearts, but thank you for your time. We enjoyed having you. Thank you for being such a great contributor to today's discussion.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move to 3.04, wireless devices audit.
Yes, if we can bring up that presentation. Uh, wireless communication devices compliance audit that I completed. Just a real quick background, the wireless devices are provided to staff based on district needs and requirements of their duties. There's 513 wireless devices based on 21, 22. I was looking at and it had, runs a cost of about $142,670 to the school district. IT is responsible for new, new device requests, provisioning and deactivating and disposing of the communication devices. Individual departments are responsible for monitoring their wireless devices usage throughout the month, through their monthly billings received from the finance department. So that's kind of the background. And then the district, next slide, the district uses, utilizes the IBM Mass 30, 360 software to monitor and manage all the district wireless communication devices. And it has the ability to locate the phones, push and pull apps off of those phones, see what the data usage is and if they need be, they can lock those phones or wireless devices so that they can no longer be used.
Just a, just a question, I guess in regards to TikTok and government devices, do we, do we lock that off of all the?
Yeah, well, we have the, only on obviously the district.
District-owned government devices.
Obviously if the person owns their own wireless device, we cannot do anything there. But yes, there are, are apps that, that, and I think it goes a little bit beyond TikTok, but yeah, there are some other apps too that we lock off. In other words, a person cannot load them on the phone and they can see what apps are on the phone. If they're on there, they can wipe them off.
What, how many flip phones? I didn't even know.
Those are the old, we're talking your generation now. I know, I know, like I can probably relate.
Real quick, those flip phones are used in the maintenance mainly. Those are used for communication within the department because they obviously have different capabilities than the other smartphones do.
Sure.
That they're, just attributed to them, they're very low-cost device for, actually there's no cost really and they get 200 phones, calls free per month on those for very low, I mean extremely low price. And if they go over it, again, it's, it's pennies for any calls over it beyond the 200. And they, from what I saw, just the year usage there, there was only a handful of phones and on a monthly basis, one above the 200 calls. So they, they can be used like walkie-talkies if that makes sense and you can't use your smartphone like a walkie-talkie. So just, it's, it's, it's an old system basically, but it's still used. One of the things I, I noted on this, just, you know, in my whole overview of gaining an understanding of, of our wireless devices throughout the district, there were some very, I, I call them exceptional performance things and I pointed out four here and actually one more that I pointed out in the conclusion as well, but you know, 113 of those wireless devices are classified as emergency safety devices. By doing that, it lowers the monthly bill and it saves us $13,500 annually. 100 of the wireless devices are available for emergency use and what that does is we, we have them available, they're put to sleep and when we have a hurricane, they activate them and they're usable at that point. And again, it's extremely low cost to, to use those. We still have 140 flip phones, again, we just talked about that, that saves us $600 annually. And we get the 228 smartphones, we get those free, we, we have some choices that we can pick from, as long as we stay within those choices, there's no cost for those phones and that saves us. I just estimate that to be at least $100,000 annually or, or over the life of the phones. Next slide, I'll just go through real quick what the findings were. I think the recommendations are pretty straightforward. The first finding was that most wireless communication devices, what we have is a form that needs to be filled out and this ties to our policy 7530.01. And that, in that policy, we require approval for each of those devices, in other words, for the person to have a device, that they be properly approved. And this form is that approval process. However, when I sampled 30, I was only able to get three out of the 30 provided to me. So we're not, we weren't maintaining those forms. Finding number two was the, the school district does not have a process to place the commu- process in place to communicate when a transfer or a separation happens. What I found out was is the phones are, you know, when somebody leaves, they give the phone, turn the phone into their supervisor, it gets put on their desk and no communication is made. That means IT does not know that that phone should be turned off because maybe it's not going to be reissued for another month or, 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 in fact, they don't even know when it gets reissued. So, you know, it could just be, you know, my phone could be handed to the new person and they may not know that, but that's not going to happen, but just FYI, if something like that happens. Currently, there are no procedures for completing an inventory of the wireless devices and we should just have an annual process just to know that, you know, they still have them, that I didn't lose mine, I just didn't, you know, communicate in that, hey, I lost mine. And then number four, the last finding was there, when I went in there, there was no standard operating procedures, all the information was in the person's head that, that ran the department. I was able to sit down and get that and I think I put a, a flow map at the back of this audit report that shows you the processes. So that basically, you know, they ended up jotting those all down. So now we have the, obviously the standard operating procedures. And that only becomes important because there's only a one-person department there. So if that person left, there goes all of our current procedures. So, and that did happen when the person left that, the finding number one left, that, that we didn't have the forms, you know, what happened to that process? So when that person left, it didn't get transferred to the, to the new person. So you can see why it's good to have these standard operating procedures. So the recommendations tied to that. And then the, just a conclusion on the last page here. Overall, you know, and I, I did this because this is some of the discussions I had with management, the need to simplify the overall process through consolidation of steps and digitizing the forms. And this came from talking back and forth to Mr. Weeks is what we could do and how we can improve the overall processes for tracking and approving and maintaining the documentation. Internal audit supports management's comments to review and update and consolidate the district's six wireless communication devices policies that are currently out there. And finally, the, the district technology support technician two has done an outstanding job moving our wireless plans to lower, lower overall monthly plans. And she shared with me right at the conclusion of the auditor, I think it was shortly after it was over, that they went back and looked at the whole plan with the, with the rep from our provider and they were able to find additional $1,000 savings in there. So it's good to constantly do that and review our plans to, to see where we can find savings because some of these plans are getting to be a little less costly each year. Eventually, there's going to be a point where they don't get any less, but, but there are ways and obviously eventually they're, they're not going to support the flip phones at some point in time, we're going to have to find a different plan there, you know, because, you know, those things tend to wear, they, they don't support that technology at some point in time and, and we have to find a different way to.
Right.
To do that. So, any questions on that audit?
No? Okay.
Great.
And last topic?
My last topic is the internship program. Again, this is something that started a while back and actually Mr. Benny left, I think he was the one that actually recommended that, that I look into this with Lake Sumter. And so I think he actually provided the name of the lady that I contacted and I reached out to her and this is some time back and her name was Ivy Beatty, B-E-A-T-E. And we started a conversation and I shared with her what I thought the internship program, next slide please, would do. And I thought, I talked with her that the intern would gain a high-level understanding of internal auditing, they would learn the audit processes and procedures, they would assist me in the performance of an internal audit project from beginning to end, contribute in the writing of the audit report and help in the presentation of the audit report to the audit committee. I thought this would be a great, you know, beginning to end learning experience for an intern that they could take with them, you know, you know, whether they become an auditor, they may become an auditor like, like Mr. Broleen and his team or that, you know, they may have a, a passion to get into internal auditing and, and do that. But I think it'd be a lot of, you know, on hands is a lot different than textbooks and, you know, sometimes you get out and you, and you can see it and you may, it might not sound good in a textbook, but you get out and do it and it's like, wow, I didn't know that you did that and I didn't know how, how this all went. So I think it'd be a great process for us and share and, you know, it'd also bring in potentially, you know, maybe if you decide to expand the department, a way of bringing someone in, you know, down the road that worked out well as an intern, that you could see, you know, come in as a, you know, staff level auditor and, and continue to learn. The next slide, just to let you know, I told you who I initially contacted. The student would come out of the Bachelor of Applied Science and Strategic Leadership Program. The professor over that is Dr. Rhonda Tracy and the program is 150 hours, it's three credits. And initially I thought it was supposed to be, you know, no cost, but they recommended, Dr. Tracy recommended that there is a compensation. It's a lot easier to find willing participants in the program if there's some kind of compensation. She said it could be a lump sum, it could be an hourly wage. So in turn, for the board docs on Monday, I put this forth that we pay them $15 an hour. I think it's $2,125 or something like that. So, and that could either be paid as an hourly or as a lump sum. Again, I have to work through HR on that and I've talked to them, but I haven't got 100% feedback exactly how it will roll out. But I think if we get the dollars then I can work out the logistics with, with the HR as far as how we're going to pay that, we're going to pay it on lump sum or whether it's better to pay it on an hourly basis.
It'd probably be hourly. Hour would make sense to me as well.
The other thing is, is if it's approved, I have to figure out, you know, how to, how to get all this work from beginning to end to fit in this 150 hours.
I don't see, based on your audits, your proposed times, I don't see how that works because none of your audits are at 150.
No, no, they wouldn't do the whole thing, Mr.
I thought your reason was they did it from.
They would assist me in doing the audit work. I would be doing a large, still a large chunk of it.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of a teaching opportunity.
It'd be a teaching opportunity. Yeah, it'd be shadow. I mean, it would, I, I mean, I'm going to have to do all the work papers and get those all together. I would probably give them pieces and parts, but yet they would still see the whole, if that makes sense.
Help with the mechanics and.
Yeah, trust me, yeah, when they told me it was only 150 hours, I was like, oh crap, I didn't realize it was that short. I thought they would get, I would get like three months of their time.
Yeah.
And, but that's just not possible.
And how is that 150 hours, it's not a full year, is that a semester or is, or is it a full year?
Well, Dr. Dr. Tracy again said some students like to, you know, you have to work with the student and how to get that 150 hours, whether it's over four, five weeks or six weeks or whether they like, she said some of them try to get it done in a couple of weeks, so. And me, a couple, I'm going to tell her a couple of weeks isn't going to work for me, I'm going to need it over probably a six to eight week period of time because if I'm. That presentation to the audit.
You want to be able to see it all the way through.
I mean, and if you had a passion for that person to come in and do a present, you know, work with me on the presentation to the, the board as well, I'd have to save a couple of hours there.
Yeah.
You know, so they would come in here and we'd do the presentation.
I think there's value in that to present your, your final work. So, so I think you have to hold back some hours for, for that.
And then they could see it up to this, then this goes to the board for final approval.
Of course, most presentations are only about three or four minutes to us, so.
Sure.
Well, you can see the process throughout that way too, instead of you just trying to jam a bunch into six weeks and being a good teacher and say, oh, let's see it this way. I mean, there's a lot of mundane work that goes into it that once you see it once, you've seen it enough for an internship, but.
You almost extend that over the course of a, a semester, just about.
Yeah, you know, we'll get into it. I think the first one's going to be a learning experience to, to then transfer to the, you know, continue on down the road. But I just wanted to get you guys as excited as I am, I mean, when it was brought forward, I, I've done internship programs over the summer with some kids and I, I've learned a lot and they still stay in touch with me today and it's very interesting, some of them are directors of internal audits out, out in other businesses. So it's nice to have seen them grow, kind of like what Ms. Cunningham gets to do is see their students continue up the, the road. It's like, wow.
Did you share with the rest of the board your new home? Do they know about you?
Yeah, I guess one of the limitations was originally space, but.
Oh, yeah. No, we're, I'm out in the portable in the back by the practice field for Taveri's and I do have a additional space in there right now for, for the intern to, to work with me. So, really nice. I do have, it's a nice space out there. Come visit.
Now, obviously this, this is a, a college student, but I, I'm just wondering even, even is there, are there any sort of industry certifications that are offered at the high school level that relate to this? Like eventually if these kids are earning industry certifications at our high schools, would this be a program where they would then follow into what, what sort of industry certifications might exist?
Yeah, be someone probably interested in going into business that might have a finance, IT, you know, something along that line. Yeah, could definitely, I think with them, you'd probably want to do it over the summer where you have a little bit more, they have obviously the, the flexibility then to, to do the, to do the work. But yeah, I mean, it's, because a lot of those kids take AP, a lot of AP courses, they're pretty sharp coming out of high school now.
Right, yeah.
I think we just have to finalize a process for selecting.
That's right.
Well, Dr. Tracy said she selects, that's what I asked her.
At that time for the college, but we're going to start talking about taking high school students.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we staff a whole department with high school students. I was just wondering, are there industry certifications that the kids could be earning? Is there a sort of another academy or CTE program that rolls out that is, that is directly related that?
One thing, it just looks good on the resume. It really looks good on your resume if you have that stuff on there.
Who gave you the recommendation to, to pay the intern? Was that Dr. Tracy?